The members will answer the roll call by indicating their presence on the electronic voting board.
The House is now in session. All persons not entitled to privileges of the floor, please retire to the gallery.
The members will rise and be led in prayer by the Honorable Luke E. Torian, the delegate from Prince William, and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which will be led by the delegate from Scott, Delegate Kilgore.
Let us pray. Our Father, we thank you for this blessed day that you've given to us. We thank you for the respite that we have enjoyed over the last several weeks as well. We thank you, dear God, for our gathering to continue the business of the Commonwealth of Virginia. I ask your blessings upon my colleagues and upon their families as well. We thank you for the privilege to serve and to be serviced on this day. Continue to watch over each of us throughout our deliberations on this day. In your holy name I pray. Amen.
...............
Thank you. I have a present for you, Dan. The members will answer the roll call by indicating their presence on the electronic voting board. The clerk will close the roll.
Mr. Speaker, a quorum is present.
The clerk will report a communication from the governor.
Proclamation. In accordance with the provisions of Article Six, Article Four, Section Six, and Article Five, Section Five of the Constitution of Virginia, the power is thereby vested in the governor. He'll call a special session of the General Assembly. I, Glenn Youngkin, Governor of Virginia, do hereby summon the members of the Senate and the House of Delegates constituting the General Assembly of Virginia to meet in special session commending the Fourth Day of April 2022 for the purpose of completion of the 2023-2024 biennial budget. Given under my hand is Governor, under the letter C of the Commonwealth at Richmond, this 23rd day of March 2022, and in the 246th year of the Commonwealth, Governor Youngkin.
As the House is operating under the 2022 through 2023 rules of the House of Delegates during Special Session One, the delegate from Scott, Delegate Kilgore, will please advise the Senate that the House of Delegates is organized and ready to proceed with business. Motion, motions and resolutions under Rule 39 pursuant to the provisions of Rule 40 are now in order. The clerk shall announce the first morning hour order of business, including any clerk's announcements and communications.
Mr. Speaker, here in the first portion of the morning hour, I would simply remind the body members that if you introduced commending and memorial resolutions, the presentation copies are sitting on your desk over in the Pocahontas Building. The presentation copies are there, so if you're here, please swing by and get those so you can do with them as you will. Then also further reminder, if you've requested a framed resolution, they'll be in your offices by the reconvene session on April 27th. Mr. Speaker, the first portion of the morning hour is reserved for member introductions and those other items listed for reference on the voting board.
The delegate from Henrico, Delegate Bagby.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise for an introduction.
The delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, joining us today is the gentleman that did the prayer for us this morning. He is a delegate from Prince William County Omega Psi Phi fraternity, graduate of three HBCUs, and I am fortunate to call him my seatmate, Delegate Luke Torian.
The delegate from Prince William, Delegate Mundon King.
Mr. Speaker, I rise with a motion.
The delegate will state it.
Speaking to that motion.
What is, state the motion. Go ahead and...
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For many of us, today is a day that greets us with sadness and grief. On an evening in Memphis, Tennessee, on April 4th at 6:05 PM, standing on the second floor balcony of the Lorraine Hotel, the leader and visionary Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was taken from us. Fifty-four years later, we come to this moment to honor his legacy and impact that could not be silenced by a bullet. While his mortal body was taken from us on April 4th, it did not rob his soul or his legacy. On today, we celebrate the life of a man who boldly fought for equity, equality, and the progression of marginalized communities. The power of his words and acts of nonviolent resistance are as needed and impactful today as they were many years ago. Through peaceful protests, grassroots organizing, and civil disobedience, Dr. King had a profound impact on our society and accomplished what many viewed at the time as impossible. During these turbulent times, his legacy serves to remind us that the moral progress is only made possible by those who continue to fight. For me, Mr. Speaker, I often ask myself, why does the death of someone who was murdered, taken from his family, many years before I was even born? Why does it hurt so much? And the answer is pretty simple. It's because we mourn all that could have been. Had Dr. King not been taken from us by white supremacy, would it have taken another 40 years before we inaugurated our first black president? Would it have taken 50 years to inaugurate the first black woman as vice president? And would we take this long to see a black woman ascend to our highest court? And those are questions that we don't know the answer to. But what we do know is that on April 4th, a husband, a father, a leader in his community, he was not lost, he was taken. And the current social climate requires that we stay committed to his mission. While we have come a long way since his assassination, it is more than evident that there is still more work to do. We've seen monumental advancements in addressing racial injustice. But we see it every day in the coded language, in the use of his image, in the attempts to try to undermine racial progress. We see that his life and legacy is needed now more than ever. I hope that as we remember him today, it will ignite in us to continue the fight for justice, for equality. And we will honor him by speaking truth, bold truth, and inconvenient truth. And that we'll remember his words when we get down, when we get sad, when we are grieved by what we see in the political and cultural space today. That we'll remember that we may not get there today, or maybe even not tomorrow. But as Dr. King says, we will get to the promised land someday. I move that when the House adjourns today, we do so in honor and memory of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
The delegate from Prince William moves that when the House adjourns today, adjourns today, it do so in the honor and memory of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. As many as favor that motion will please rise. The motion is agreed to. The delegate from Newport News, Delegate Mullin.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise for a motion.
The delegate will state it.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise today to ask that the House adjourn today in the honor and memory of Senator John Miller, and I'd like to speak to that motion.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Senator John Miller left this life of ours six years ago today. John was an amazing public servant, community advocate, and friend to all of us on the Virginia Peninsula. Many of us, Mr. Speaker, remember John first from his time as a reporter for W V E C Channel 13. He was relentless, or an interviewer, who always found the humanity of those he spoke to and with. After he left ABC, John moved to Christopher Newport University after answering the call to public service that his old friend, President Paul Tribble, helped with a growing and expanding university. Mr. Speaker, John was first elected to the Virginia Senate in 2007 and became a shining example of bipartisanship. He fought for more school recess, for nonpartisan redistricting, and for increased teacher salaries. But most of all, Senator Miller listened. He was always someone who thought twice before he spoke and always listened before he did. I'm proud, Mr. Speaker, to say that I still have my John Miller for Senate t-shirt, which is a little bit snuggier than it was six years ago. John left us with his beloved wife Sharon Kitchen-Miller, his son, daughter, and grandchildren. I know I spooked the entire Virginia Peninsula when I say he is truly loved and missed. And so, Mr. Speaker, I would move that today, when the House adjourn, it do so in the honor and memory of the late Senator John Miller.
The delegate from Newport News moves that when the House adjourns today, it do so in the honor and memory of Senator John Miller. As many as favor that motion will please rise. The motion is agreed to. The delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Greenhall.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I do have someone to introduce. I'm in Virginia Beach. We're the home of a school called the Tai Water Ukrainian School. And with us today, we have the principal of the school, Tatiana Ordono. There she is. She's with us today, and with her is a friend, Tanya. They are both from Ukraine. Tatiana is actually the principal and teacher of the Tai Water Ukrainian School, where they're trying to keep alive the culture of the Ukraine people. Tanya's family is from a city in Ukraine that is already 80% destroyed. So as principal, Tanya has shifted the school, Tatiana has shifted the school in the last 30 days to a humanitarian effort. She has managed to switch the school to collecting, to collecting items that are in need in the villages. And she has volunteer truck drivers who are shipping those items to New Jersey, where another shipping company at a discounted rate is sending those straight to Western Ukraine so that they can be delivered by their friends and family to the people that are in need. So just so you know, the clerk of the court has information on the school and the humanitarian effort that they have underway. So all of you will be able to take part if you would like. So today, I just asked you to join me in welcoming Tatiana and Tanya and give them a warm House welcome. Thank you for your service.
Pursuant to House Rule 30, the journal shall reflect that the following members are away on pressing personal business and are granted leave from today's session. Delegates Edmonds, Gooditis, Helmer, Corey, McQuinn, and Simons. The clerk will report a resolution.
House Joint Resolution Number 6001, limiting legislation to be considered by the 2022 Special Session One of the General Assembly and establishing a schedule for the conduct of business coming before such session. Mr. Speaker, HJ 6001 has been distributed as available online. It's now before the body.
The delegate from Scott, Delegate Kilgore.
Mr. Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Joint Resolution 6001 is the legislation which would limit what we can consider during the 2022 Special Session. Basically, it allows us to consider House Bill 29 and 30 and any, and any other conference reports that were continued, still ongoing, as we adjourned Sunday night at the 2022 regular session. Also, it would allow legislation that may be communicated from the governor, memorial and commending resolutions, election of judges, and any, that we consider any appointments that are subject to confirmation of the General Assembly. Also, in there would allow us to be, each party, either body could adjourn from time to time until reconvene with at least 48 hours' notice by either the Speaker or the Chair of the Senate Committee on Rules. So basically, Mr. Speaker, that is the House Joint Resolution, and I would ask, I would move for its adoption.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Mr. Speaker, would the delegate yield for a question?
Will the delegate yield?
I'll yield.
The delegate yield.
Mr. Speaker, members of the House, I noticed that, I guess imitation is the sincerest form of flattery. I noticed that you guys have adopted a convention that we adopted when we were in charge on special sessions, which is to allow specifically for bills sent down sent down by the governor. I noticed, I looked back at the 2019 resolution when y'all were in charge and the Governor North, and that language wasn't there, but we put it in, and I see that you guys like it and have left it in there. So my question is, any bill that is sent down by the governor, though, would still be subject to all the other rules in Article Four that require it to be referred to a committee, be heard and reported favorably upon by that committee, and have all three of its constitutional readings. Is that correct?
That would be correct, Mr. Speaker and the gentleman.
Mr. Speaker, additional question? Will the gentleman give for additional questions?
Will the delegate yield?
I'll yield.
The delegate yield.
And so, Mr. Speaker, final question is, I assume that you guys are very much committed, as we are, to ensuring a transparent process, and that any committee meetings that would be held on any legislation that would be sent down would be preceded by any, by some adequate notice, and that members of the public that were interested, members of the committees, obviously, that need to rearrange their lives, their vacations, their work schedules, and so forth, so they can be there, would have plenty of time, well in advance of any committee meetings, to arrange for that. And again, I know there are a lot of very interested people in what's, anticipated bill that's been talked about a lot is coming down, that would want an opportunity to participate. You can assure us that all those folks will have plenty of opportunity to be there when it counts, when these things are in committee.
I would assure the gentleman, there was going to be proper notice, going to be opportunity for everyone to participate, and especially notice to the members especially, yes.
Mr. Speaker, I thank the gentleman.
Shall the resolution be agreed to? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, ninety-four, no, zero.
Ayes, ninety-four, no, zero. The resolution is adopted. The delegate from Scott, Delegate Kilgore, will communicate the action of the House of Delegates to the Senate and request its concurrence. The House will be at ease.
The House will come to order. Sergeant at Arms.
Mr. Speaker, a message from the Senate.
The Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have been directed by the President of the Senate to inform the House of Delegates that the Senate has agreed to House Joint Resolution 6001.
Thank you, Senator. The Clerk will call the calendar.
Excuse me, calendar for today, for today, day one of the 2022 Special Session One on Monday, April 4th, 2022. Mr. Speaker, based upon the fact that no conference reports have been delivered, there is no business before the body.
Per House Rule 51, the House has returned to the morning hour. Does the Clerk have any additional announcements or communications?
Mr. Speaker, I would simply ask if you do have a conference report for whenever we next meet, if you could submit it to us, then we'll be able to process it and have it ready for the next meeting. But other than that, Mr. Speaker, I'm not aware of any meetings this afternoon.
The Delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Knight.
Mr. Speaker, I ask for an announcement.
The Delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, the Budget Conference will meet immediately. If you bang in the gavel this afternoon up in the 13th floor, and along with that, I'd like to let everyone know that the budget negotiations are ongoing. We are talking to them a little bit back and forth. They're kind of taking their time, and we're ready to meet anytime that they are. They're going to meet this afternoon, the Senate being they. We're going to meet this afternoon. We're not sure if we'll get together this afternoon, but we certainly anticipate getting together later this week or next week. We're not as far apart as you might read in the paper. We are talking about returning some money to the citizens of Virginia Beach. They're talking about some spending. I was hoping y'all wouldn't catch that, but anyways, so we're talking for Virginia. Thank you for catching that. Thank you for catching that, Ken Plum. But we aren't that far apart. The Senate has some spending proposals, and some of them are good, and we agree with them, and we have some proposals on the tax policy side that they actually agree with. We will come to a compromise. It's a matter of how long it's going to take. So just as an update, we are moving forward. We're making progress. We did give the Chairman of Senate Finance another sheet today to work off of, an option. But we think now, the slide in the paper, back and forth across the table, we've done all we can do with that. Now we need to get in the room, lock the door, and see what we can do about coming to a compromise. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The Delegate from Scott, Delegate Kilgore.
Mr. Speaker, have a motion?
The Delegate will state it.
Mr. Speaker, let me get to my motion here to make sure I say it exactly right. Yep, should have been on the right page. Mr. Speaker, I move that the House stand in recess pursuant to the provisions of House Joint Resolution 6002. One, one.
The Delegate from Scott, Delegate Kilgore moves that the House stand in recess pursuant to the provisions of House Joint Resolution 6001. As many as favor that motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is agreed to. The House stands in recess pursuant to the provisions of House Joint Resolution 6001.